Live people. Good evening. Good folks of Alexander and all guests. And all folks who have dared to tune in to this week's live stream Facebook. The Alexander Baptist Church Facebook page. It's me, your devoted pastor. Coming to you live. From the wood that's at. Otherwise known as Atwood. That's right folks. I'm here in Tennessee. 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 I'm not sure how to pronounce it, but I always emphasize the first syllable. I didn't know that until John Dillander told me that I did that. Tennessee. So yes, I'm in Tennessee and I'm from Tennessee. What'd you think about that? Dale Hope, good morning to you too, brother. Glad you're awake. Anybody else out there? There's eight of us so far. I'm gonna send a little welcome out announcement here. Good evening. It's great to see you all. Thanks for logging in. Looks like I offended someone. We went from eight to seven. I apologize. Good evening, NetNet. It's good to hear from you. Annette Hartong, Pastor Jeff. Laurie and Bubba. My neighbors. Where y'all at? I haven't seen you lately. Haven't seen you in the neighborhood. Maybe it's because I'm not in the neighborhood too much these days. Valerie, hope work goes well for you. Ms. Janet Boone, it's good to see you. Hope you're doing well. I can hear you. I'm here in my mother-in-law's home and I'm in the dining room. I tried to find a spot to land. I asked her where she would like for me to do Facebook livestream to where the whole world would see. A certain part of her house, so. Anyways, we chose the dining room. I wanted to be in front of both windows, but there was a bit of a glare, so I wasn't able to do that. Hey Nick Rowe, good to see you Susan. God bless you. Kim Sugg and family. Tell everyone we said hello. Oh, there's Carolyn Redden. Good to see you. Hope you're doing well. Hope everybody's doing okay. Hey Carolyn, how's your fridge and cupboard looking these days? Ha ha. Oh, that was good. That was good. That was an inside joke for Carolyn, but she knows exactly what I'm talking about. Laurie and Bubba, happy 50th anniversary to you guys. That is awesome. Hey G-Ma, NetNet says hello. G-Ma says hello to you. I won't let her come in the dining room. She has to stay in there cooking my supper, so we've got her pinned down in the kitchen doing her. Working her magic like she always does every time we come. Amazing food and food prep. Okay Carolyn Redden, I'm not hearing from you. That was a really good joke. You'll have to go back and listen to it if you missed it. Good to see you Ms. Deanna. God bless you. Julie Summers, it was great to see you on Sunday by the way, and visit with you for a little bit at church. Let's see. Dick and Shirley, great to see you guys logged in. That is awesome. I love it. I love it. I got your message Carolyn. Thank you for that. We've had some great, some great days. It's been a real blessing. Had some, I personally had some early mornings and lots of late evenings, but it's been great. We were, yeah, it's been good. It's been great. The Lord blessed us with a safe, safe time of travel and that was a huge blessing. So we praise the Lord for that. Showed it. Sorry, there was a net on the screen. So that's why I blew on the screen in case you're wondering why I did that. Okay, well. We're waiting on time, time to happen. We're at 5:27 here, so it's 6:27 there, I'm assuming. I was talking to Pastor Jeff just a few minutes ago and I was like, ah! I realize the time change, but I've never had to truly be affected by the time change. As far as being online at the right time. And so, yeah, it's 5:30 here. Tragic, tragically enough, we've not had supper yet, so. There you have it. And just like that. Sorry, the net is just, won't go away. Just like that, we're up to 24 folks. Good to see you, good people. Ms. Gail, it is great to see you plugged in. Who else is out there? Hey Bonnie and Keith, great to see y'all. Glad you're plugged in. Hey Betty B. Good to see you plugged in. Alright, we are approaching the 6:30 mark. So yeah, it's about 6:30, so we'll go ahead and kinda do some welcome stuff and some intro stuff. Welcome home to Alexander Baptist Church. It's truly. Alexander Baptist Church is home. It is a place to call home for sure. Even when you're miles and miles away, Alexander Baptist Church is always home. So if you are a member of our church, or if you're a guest online with us tonight, or if you're a guest in our services live. We're just so thankful to be a part of Alexander Baptist Church in Chesapeake, Virginia. And if you're a guest and you're local, and you don't belong to a church, we'd love to have you join us at Alexander Baptist Church, okay? Let's see. So yeah, we've had a great time thus far. The Lord gave us safe travels on Sunday afternoon. Into the late night hours. And hey Rick and Donna, good to see you guys. We were able to spend some time with my mom today through a glass, a window. And she had a phone and we had a phone and we were able to talk to her and show her some pictures and kinda catch up with her that way. Her birthday was on Sunday, and so it was good to see her. Taking care of some other things while we're here, and just hanging out with family. We've attended a birthday party. And we're gonna be a part of a retirement celebration as well while we're here, so that's always exciting to be with family. Carlisle and Judy, good to see you guys. Cliff, alright my man. Good to see you brother. And Mary and Gordon, good to see you all as well. We really love and miss you guys. It's great to be with you here on this Wednesday night in Atwood, Tennessee. So, yeah, it's been great. Was in the woods today and that was fun. Other than the ticks, yeah, they were everywhere. Yeah, like everywhere. But we had some fun and just hanging out, doing some scouting and some other things, so that's always fun. Had a lot of time to spend with family. Were able to eat at one of our favorite places, sort of. I made some great plans to have lunch as a family at our favorite restaurant and we all got there and their dining room was not open. So that was not so good. Evidently you should not let the out-of-towner plan lunch outings. That would be maybe, maybe some good advice for me to take. Okay, let's see. What else? Evangelism, How the Church Speaks of Jesus. That's what we'll be talking about tonight. Also be reading to you from The Valley of Vision. And then, if you have one of these handy, I bet you do, your own personal copy of the Word of God. We'll be looking at some of the scriptures tonight that the text mentions. The textbook mentions, the book of evangelism. Uh oh, who we got? Jill Willoughby, good to see you Jill. Jean and Cindy, glad you guys are here. Hey Katie, love you too, miss you. Katie, I think y'all, y'all have been out of town. Katie, are y'all back in town? April, good to see you tonight. We welcome you. Alright. If you've been plugged in anytime at all, you'll know, you'll know that I have a trademark. Something that I'm kinda known for on Facebook livestream on Wednesday nights. And that is my, my orange Dunkin' Donut cup. I do not, I'm not, I'm not being sponsored by Dunkin' Donuts. They've not, they didn't even give me the cup. They made me pay for it. They don't give me free donuts. They wouldn't be my pick of choice to begin with, but they get lots of free advertisement from me. But tragically, tonight, since I'm not home, I don't have my orange cup. So if you're kinda looking for when the, when the orange cup is gonna kinda. Show up and go across the screen, I'm sorry, it's not here. So we got your, your Daegona coffee, which is also called Daggonit Coffee. We got that here. And then the other drink of choice tonight is your purified water Wesley Farms. Sounds like BJ's maybe? I don't know. I got it somewhere. But anyways, that's it. Let's see, so Katie, April, Judy. Amy. Jones, good to see you. So, so yes. The deal is, the Daggonit Coffee, we don't have an espresso machine here, so it's being made differently, but it is good. And I'll tell you why it's good. Because Noel is awesome. She's awesome. Every day almost, she makes me my Daggonit Coffee and she didn't charge me a thing. Nothing. Zero. Nada. Zilch. Nothing. Donna Vick, it is great to see you logged in as well. Love and miss you. So, we'll go ahead and get started here. From the, the Valley of Vision. This one's called Refuge. Whose power is infinite? And wisdom infallible, oh Lord. Order things that they may neither hinder nor discourage me, nor prove obstacles to the progress of thy cause. Stand between me and all strife that no evil befall. No sin corrupt my gifts, zeal attainments. May I follow duty and not any foolish device of my own. Permit me not to labor at work which thou wilt not bless, that I may serve thee without disgrace or debt. Let me dwell in thy most secret place under thy shadow, where is safe, impenetrable protection. From the arrow that flyeth by day, the pestilence that walketh in darkness, the strife of tongues, the malice of ill will. The hurt of unkind talk, the snares of company, the perils of youth, the temptations of middle life, the mornings of old age, the fear of death. I am entirely dependent upon thee for support, counsel, counsel, consolation. Uphold me by thy free spirit, and may I not think it enough to be preserved from falling, but may I always go forward. Always abounding in the work thou givest me to do. Strengthen me by thy spirit in my inner self, for every purpose of my Christian life. And again, that is from The Valley of Vision, Puritan prayers. And so, it is great. I think this is the first book I ever got that I actually was able to read someone's prayers and somewhat pray along with those prayers. Very, very spiritual, very, very healthy, very godly. So anyways, again, welcome tonight. We're six minutes in. Well, actually, we're 15 minutes in because I started kinda early just to make sure we had good, good service. And Noel, how is it out there? It's going pretty good. Noel, you okay? She's good. She's actually on the roof. She has tinfoil wrapped around both of her ears. And she's holding up an antenna that used to be the house TV antenna. So she's holding it up and there's a wire coming through. Can you see the wire? Okay, there's a wire coming through, back there, through the window, and it's running, running down on the ground and back up into my computer. So that's how we're able to have service. Hang on. Honey, tilt it to the left a little bit. Okay, that's better. Okay, we're good, we're good. Don't fall! Okay, yeah, we're good. So, let's say, nice, okay Kathy, good to see you. Rick and Carol, good to see you guys. Okay. I'm thinking I'm gonna get a lot of laughs, but there's a 20 to 30 second delay normally. I'm thinking since I'm in Tennessee and Noel's on the roof with tinfoil, it's about a three-minute delay. So whenever you get the funny, go ahead and send me some laughy emojis so that I know that you think it's funny as well. Or maybe just some token laughs to make me feel better about myself. That would be great as well. And there's nothing. And still nothing. Oh, thank you Carlisle. Thank you so much. You like that? Okay, so, let's go ahead and, oh, let me do announcements. Announcements, here we go. You ready? Sunday, we'll be doing live church. Livestream, YouTube and Facebook. And we'll be at the church. Open, fully open, and then you can also be in the back parking lot or in the pavilion out back. Pastor Jean is going to bring the word. The translation for that in Tennessee, most churches use is shuck the corn. So Pastor Jean, we know you're gonna bring it. Don't forget to shuck the corn slash preach the word, okay? Very good, very good. Hang on just a minute, let me check. Noel, you still good? Okay, we're just gonna trust that she's gonna be okay up on the roof, okay? Very good. Here we go, let's see. And, oh, Sue King, oh my gracious, great to see you lady. Alright, well let's, what other announcements? Giving, keep, continue to give. I will. Give you a note of reminder, okay? Giving has been strong, it's been a blessing. One thing that's dropped off a touch is our giving God's way. So giving God's way is the way that we pay for our campus. The parking lot, the land, the building, everything. And so, we pay for that by way of love offerings outside of our budget. So when you give your tithes, your tithes do not go towards giving God's way. Unless there's a shortage and money has to be transferred. But the way that, that the mortgage is paid is through the free will giving of God's people, through giving God's way. And so, that fund has dipped, and so we need to raise those funds up. So if you can, pray about giving to giving God's way. We do ask every member, that every time you tithe, that you also give something to giving God's way. And whether it's weekly or monthly or yearly. But please be on board with that. It's kinda like this, this responsibility that all members have to be able to give extra to pay for our building. And I've been doing it ever since before I was a member, and before I was the pastor. I've been able to give to giving God's way, so I encourage you to do that as well. Okay, well let's have a word of prayer and then we'll get started. Father, thank you for this day and for your goodness toward us. Thank you for your sovereignty and Lord, your providence. So excited, Lord, for your faithfulness toward us and how you orchestrate the affairs and the events of our lives for your own glory. Father, I pray that you meet with us tonight in a powerful way as we look to our textbook for tonight, evangelism. Help us Lord God, not just to gain information from the text, but Lord, help us to, to be able to embrace a lifestyle. A culture of evangelism personally and corporately as a church. Lord, we lift up those who are hurting, those who are struggling, those who are lonely, those who are discouraged, those who are grieving, Lord. We pray in Jesus's name for them. Father, I pray that you would do a great work in our hearts and lives, that we would be your faithful servants, and we would be faithful in sharing your love with others. For it's in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen. Okay, so again, coming to you live from Atwood, Tennessee. And we're glad that you are plugged in with us tonight. And, I was thinking there was one other thing. Oh, don't forget. Next Wednesday night, July the 1st, we're gonna be live on Facebook, but we're also gonna be live in the church building. So you can come, if you'd like, to be with us in person next Wednesday, July the 1st. Also, next Wednesday night, we're gonna take a break from this as we're gonna have our introduction to the Book of Esther. There's gonna be a plethora of fantastic information. By way of introducing the Book of Esther to you, the background, the setting, the date, the author, the themes, the provenance, and all of those things. So you wanna be a part of that. And then, the following Sunday, we'll be in the Book of Esther, and that's gonna be exciting. So again, we love you, miss you. It's so good to see you, so thankful that you're here. So let's jump in. This week, we're in chapter two. By the way, just, just as a word of warning, because I never know, you know, what you all perceive is going on. So I want you to know that I'm in the dining room, which is adjacent to the kitchen. And there is, there's major food prep going on in the kitchen and, and washing of dishes and such. So I am not near a bathroom, in case that's what it sounds like. I am not. I'm near the kitchen. And so you're gonna hear some water running and some other things like that, okay? So just so you know. Okay, I wanted to give that. Oh, look, my niece Brandy is plugged in. That's cool, because she's about 100 yards down the road, so that's cool. Okay, chapter two, the book of evangelism. The title of chapter two is called A Culture of Evangelism. Listen to what Paul wrote in Philippians 1:7-8. "I hold you in my heart, for you are all partakers with me of grace, both in my imprisonment and in the defense and confirmation of the gospel. For God is my witness how I yearn for you all with the affection of Christ Jesus." Philippians 1:7-8. The writer says, "Identify strongly with Paul's affection for his friends in Philippa." He says, "For as long as I can remember, I've lived with friends." Me too. Sometimes I need some alone time, but I am in no way a loner. I love to be around people and, so that's a good thing by the way, if you're a pastor of a church, that you like people, so that's cool. He says, "Despite the occasional required individual activity," he says, "My life's desire from the backyard to the far reaches of the world is to be with friends." He says, "It's how I'm wired. It's how I've always been, and I'm the same way." Says, "So why does an extrovert like me think of evangelism only in individual terms?" He says, "Maybe it's because that's the way we've been taught." I mean, I had a seminary class, this is me personally here, not the book. I had a seminary class called Personal Evangelism. Why does it have to be, why does it have to be personal? Why is it personal evangelism? Why wasn't it just evangelism? I don't know, because for whatever reason, that's, that's what we were trained to do, that we had to go out by ourselves and evangelize people, all alone. Well, what do we know about telling people about the Lord and going out alone? It's scary. We can be a little nervous about that, right? I mean, we have fears. Will they listen? Will they like us? Will they get mad at us? Will they reject what we have to say? And so we have all of these thoughts going on about personal evangelism. Now, there is that rare person, he writes, that is uninhibited about sharing their faith. You might have one or two in a church, but that, that's it. People who just go out and they just boldly, they have no problem at all sharing their faith. And praise the Lord for people like that. That is a huge blessing that they're able to do that. But most folks, that's not the case. There's a fear of rejection, a fear of looking or sounding stupid, a fear of being lumped into, you know, some sort of stereotype as a TV evangelist or whatever. So, so why, why must we do something scary and difficult by ourselves? And, and the answer is basically, we don't have to. I mean, if you think about it. There's great power and strength in believers coming together for a common cause. And what greater common cause is there than telling people how to be saved? How they might come to know the Lord Jesus Christ. And so we should be evangelizing others, but we should be doing it, he argues, and I would agree, with our brothers and sisters in Christ. He says, "I appreciate personal evangelism and we need to be equipped for it." We should. Because you never know when you might be alone on an airplane or in a setting. And maybe it's you at a restaurant and there's a waiter or waitress and you can share with. You know, we need to be prepared for that individual encounter. But, we also need to be prepared as churches to have a culture of evangelism. We want the, we don't want just that one or two people who are gifted in the area of evangelism. We don't just want those two people sharing the gospel. I mean, I mean, it's not like we're gonna put them in front of the church and then send them out because the rest of us are losers or something. It doesn't work that way. But for all of us to be able to, to share the gospel, and to share the gospel together is awesome. He talks about the benefits of communal or community evangelism. We get to hold one another accountable. We get to strengthen our mutual resolve. We learn from one another. We rejoice together in success. We cry together in failure. We bond through shared experiences and intense situations. It's really cool when you are there and the gospel's being shared and it's not by you. You get to hear someone else's perspective of the gospel. Maybe they use different Bible verses than you. Maybe they share a different personal story than you. Everybody's got their own testimony, right? And so it just makes sense to share our faith alongside our friends. And, and if you think about it, if, if you have to go out on your own and tell somebody about the gospel. You're probably gonna find an excuse not to go. Or you're gonna go, you're gonna hate it, and you're gonna come back, and you're gonna do it one time, and you're probably never gonna do it again. But, if, if there's two or three or four or five of us, or we're going to lunch and we're gonna have gospel conversations. That's kinda exciting, isn't it? To know that as fellow believers, we get to go together in the name of Jesus and share the hope that lies within us. Hey, sorry, hang on. Nate, how are you? Great, Nate's been swimming today. He's been in the pool down the street, so we're glad you're, I'm glad you're back buddy. Good to see you. You coming over or you get over there? He says he's with you in spirit, but he's gonna, he's gonna stay away from the big screen tonight, okay? Alright, so. When we think of communal evangelism however, what do we think about? Now think about it. What do we think about? Think about it. What do we think about? Think about it. What do we think about? This is what we think about. We think about evangelistic programs, right? We think about EE or CWT, Evangelism Explosion, Sharing Without Fear, just all of these programs. Or, or we think about the Evangelistic Crusade. We picture the big sweeping revivalist type of movement with this glorious speaker or this amazing 3,000 voice choir. Or some sort of spiritual pep rally, or, or some sort of Easter or Christmas pageant. Now, God can use programs and people have been saved through those programs. But, and I would agree with what he says, those programs are probably not the primary way we should be doing evangelism. Because what happens is, we depend on those programs instead of our testimony. What happens is, we, we put all of our eggs in the one basket of one event that happens once every year, or two, or three, or four, or five years. And we do no evangelism outside of that. So the most effective way, and the most primary way for us to do evangelism, is amongst ourselves, with the lost, together sharing the gospel. He tells a great story, beginning on page 43, of an Easter pageant program. Hang on just a minute. And this Easter pageant program, it like exploded. I mean, it was huge. It was, it was vast. It was deep and wide. And it had breadth and depth and length. Let's throw that in there as well, since we're in geometry and stuff. But what happened was, as they looked back over the years, the bigger and the better that, that the event got, the more of a production it became. Did you hear what I said? It got bigger and better and it became a production. We live in a day, and I've been in churches, and I'm, I'm deeply disturbed. When in a church, a church decides that they need to entertain the audience. That's really sad. Our job is not to entertain. Our job is to evangelize and disciple. I've been inside churches with the, the lights, you know, swerving in and out and doing all sorts of things. And I've been in churches where they actually have smoke machines, billowing smoke everywhere. And, and I'm, and I'm, and in my mind, I'm thinking- And, and I'm, and I'm, and in my mind, I'm thinking, what are we doing here? We've bought into the mentality of entertainment. Now, I like to be entertained. I, I like lights. I'm okay with smoke. Um, I mean, as long as it's not too much. Um, I, I like good productions. I like great acting. I like fabulous singing. I, I like all of that. But I don't go to church for that. If, if I wanna do that, I might go, if I'm in New York, I might go try to pick up a, a show on Broadway. Um, I might wanna go to the movies, or, or, you know, or watch something at home, or go to some sort of event. But I don't want smoke and lights in church. I, I want Jesus. I want the Word of God. I want the Bible. Interestingly, about this, this production, they eventually stopped it. They saw that it was not productive is they couldn't even track where anyone had really gotten saved as a result. Can you imagine that? Thousands of, of hours of training, thousands, maybe even millions of dollars spent on this production, and not even one person coming to know Jesus as Savior and Lord? Wow. Really and truly, most people come to the Lord through family members, through social interactions, through friendships, over dinners, through small group Bible studies, uh, conversation with a friend after a service, um, uh, talking about a, a passage of scripture. Uh, when, when you take a cold, hard look at programs, um, things just don't add up. For all the time, all the energy, all the people, and all the money that you invest, it's just doesn't seem to be worth the result, which is no one coming to know the Lord. Now, again, people can, and people have, and people probably will, so it's not saying, never do it. But it's saying that that should not be your primary method for evangelism in your church, and I would agree with that. On page 46, it says, "Oddly, it seems evangelistic programs do other things better than evangelism." Uh, they produce community among Christians who take part in them. They encourage believers to take a stand for Christ, and they can enable churches to break into new places of ministry. I know when we used to have, um, at, at some of my other churches, we used to have scheduled revivals. And, and literally, this is what would happen. We would have a revival. We would have a speaker come in. We'd have special singers and all of those things. And 99%, 99 point whatever percent of the people who would come would be Christians. Uh, there would be people from other churches. The other churches would empty out in order to come to our church, uh, for the revival service. And which is great. It's great for building fellowship and discipling the, the church and believers. But it's not evangelism. It's just not. It's not winning people or striving to win people to Christ. Not having a charismatic moment. There was a nod in my face. Sorry. It's, it's just all over me here. Um, but anyways. Let's see. It says, "We seem to have an insatiable hunger for programs." It seems like we do in Baptist churches and other churches, or we have. He says, "Why?" He says, "Programs are like sugar. It's tasty, even addictive. However, it takes away a desire for more healthy food, though it provides a quick burst of energy. Over time, it makes you flabby." Uh-oh, did he go there? Yes, I did. "It makes you flabby, and a steady diet will kill you." A strict diet of evangelistic pro, evangelistic programs produces malnourished evangelism. I would say malnourished Christians. I would say malnourished churches. Just as eating sugar can make us feel as if we've eaten when we haven't, programs can often make us feel like we've done evangelism when we really haven't told anyone about the gospel who doesn't already embrace the gospel. So we should have a healthy unease with programs. We should use them strategically, but in moderation. Remembering that God did not send an event. He sent His Son, Jesus. Boy, that, that's a good one right there. So what should we do? We want to have evangelism in community. We, we long to have friends alongside us when we share our faith. He says, "I wanna build a case, something that is both communal and personal, a culture of evangelism." And on page 47, he says, "What is a culture of evangelism?" And that's really gonna be the, the, the theme for the rest of the chapter. As he has, what, 10? What does he call it? "Ten Yearnings for a Culture of Evangelism," beginning on page 48. And then, of course, when you get to the chapter, you realize, what's he doing? There's 11. Uh, uh, you know, I know. Preachers do that sometimes. They say, "I've got 10 points," and they wind up with 23 or something like that. Who knows? So what is a culture of evangelism on page 47? "It is next to impossible to understand a culture, any culture, simply by reading a book," right? We know that. You can read about a foreign country and do all your research and, and learn the language and, and learn the customs and, and everything else, but when you get there, you're not gonna be fully or adequately prepared. It's, you just can't be unless you are immersed in that culture, right? Church culture has to do with shared ideas, a shared language, a shared understanding of how to act. So, so in church, the pastor, your pastor is gonna preach to you about redemption, and he's gonna love talking about redemption. It's one of his favorite words. He's gonna tell you that redemption has, has the, the whole idea, concept of being helplessly enslaved to something, someone, without any resources with which to free ourselves. In the midst of our being hopeless and helpless and cannot free ourselves, God sent His Son, Jesus, to redeem, to purchase us. His blood redeemed us. He purchased us with His blood, and He set us free, something we could not do for ourselves and something no one else could do for us. I love the word redemption, but lost people don't know what that word means. In the language of the church, we know what it means. We get excited about redemption and reconciliation, even the word evangelism. But lost people don't get that. And so we do, as a church, have our own culture, and there's nothing wrong with that. We just have to understand that when we have a gospel conversation with someone, and we mention the word redemption, we have to take a few moments and lovingly take our time and share the definition of, of what is redemption? What is this about, this, this word redemption? And other words as well. It says, "A culture of evangelism in churches or fellowships has common biblical ideas, a biblical language, and shared biblical actions, and it's visible to those within it. They long for their churches to be loving communities committed to sharing the gospel as a part of an ongoing way of life, not by the occasional evangelistic raid event." That's funny. Here are my top 10 yearnings, he says, for a culture of evangelism. Number one, "A Culture Motivated by Love for Jesus and His Gospel." 2 Corinthians 5:14-15. "For the love of Christ controls us, or compels us. Because we have concluded this, that one has died for all, therefore all have died. And He died for all, that those who live might no longer live for themselves, but for Him, who for their sake died and was raised." Again, 2 Corinthians 5:14-15. "Evangelism often feels like pushing a ball uphill," he says. "But when I'm with people whose motivation for evangelism springs from a love from Jesus, the perception of evangelism changes. To be compelled by love to share the gospel individual by, is, is a beautiful thing. But when it happens in community, it's joyfully glorious. The need to badger people to share their faith evaporates. It becomes something we long to do together because we're beginning to have less and less fear, because we know somebody's gonna be with us. It becomes a way of thinking." Now, the world, the flesh, and the devil always oppose us in evangelism, always. But in a culture of evangelism rooted in the hearts of love for Jesus and His gospel, it feels as if the mountain tilts down a bit, and instead of pushing the ball uphill, we begin chasing the ball. That's a good analogy. Number two, the second yearning for a culture for evangelism. "A Culture That Is Confident in the Gospel." Paul writes in Romans 1:16, "I am not ashamed of the gospel, for it is the power of God unto salvation." One of his friends asked this question. He says, "I wonder why they lost their confidence in the gospel." "What do you mean?" I asked. "They were speaking about a parachurch ministry that once had been a vibrant center of gospel witness, but had lately fallen into lukewarmness. Sadly, history is full of such stories. At what point did they start trusting gimmicks and worldly methods rather than the plain message of the gospel?" He says, "I yearn for a culture of evangelism that never trades confidence in the gospel for confidence in techniques, personalities, or entertainment gimmicks. The world tempts weak Christians to be ashamed of the gospel. I yearn for a culture of evangelism in which we build one another up and remind one another to put aside worldly practices and techniques of evangelism, placing our full confidence in the power of the plain message of the gospel." Number three, "A Culture That Understands the Danger of Entertainment." Ezekiel, chapter 33, in verse 30 through 32. "Your people who walk together about you by the walls, who talk together about you by the walls and at the door of your houses, say to one another, each to his brother, 'Come, and hear what the word is that comes from the Lord.' And they come to you as people come, and they sit before you as my people, and they hear what you say, but they will not do it. For with lustful talk in their mouths they act, their heart is set on their gain. And behold, you are to them like one who sings lustful songs with a beautiful voice and plays well on an instrument, for they hear what you say, but they will not do it." People talked about the ancient Israelite prophet Ezekiel on the social network of his day, by the walls, by the doors, and they called, called to one another, "Hey, let's go hear the hottest new show in town, Ezekiel the Preacher Man." They went to hear him as if they were, as if he were a lusty singer or a great musical performer. They saw Ezekiel not as a prophet speaking to them about their salvation, but as an entertainer. For all their enthusiasm about the performance, what was on their minds was, according to God's word, sex and money, not obedience to God." Says, "Doesn't that sound like a modern program?" To get people to show up for a church service today in some churches, we need only to post, uh, an exciting topic on Twitter, put together a rousing musical performance, or find a charismatic speaker who pulls at people's heartstrings. Extra points if he's funny. It's not hard, but we, but beware. God warned Ezekiel, and He warns us today. You may get a crowd through such methods, but you won't get their hearts. To get hearts is a work of the Spirit alone. I wanna just pause from the book for a moment. We're just gonna, we're gonna finish up number three, and, and we'll be finished. And then in a couple of weeks, we'll, we'll finish up chapter two. I really wanna lovingly challenge us tonight. We, we still, I think sometimes we still struggle with the whole, um, desire to be, um, to be entertained. Again, not that there's anything wrong with being entertained, but we shouldn't seek to be entertained at church. No matter our age. So, um, there's some churches out there. I'm sorry, let me back up. There are some gatherings out there. The, the gatherings are marked not by gospel preaching or by gospel teaching, not by biblical doctrine at all. Those churches are said to be a mile wide and an inch deep. In other words, they gather people together, and there's a ton of people that will gather together, but they're just a crowd. They're not a community of faith. The preacher doesn't preach the Bible. He doesn't preach the gospel. He doesn't talk about sin or sinners. He doesn't talk about the need for reconciliation and the need for redemption. He doesn't talk about the peace of God that surpasses all understanding. He doesn't talk about forgiveness in Christ alone. Talks about all sorts of other things, but not the primary mandatory necessary things that lead people to faith in Christ. So I don't know who might be out there listening, and maybe even some folks in our church. I just really wanna issue a warning against following those type of preachers and those type of churches, where there's not a desire for the souls of men and women, boys and girls. There's a desire to please people. There's a desire to entertain. There's a desire to be liked. There's a desire for power. And over the last, I don't know, five, 10 years, we've seen a lot of these churches and a lot of these pastors fall by the wayside. I remember not long ago, maybe it's been 10 years, maybe, maybe less, maybe more, I don't, I don't know, but there was a huge church, and it was growing by leaps and bounds. And I listened to one of the sermons from the pastor, and I was, I was, it was bad, y'all. I mean, it was, it was like I was listening to the communication or the, you know, the dialogue from a, a rated R movie. The pastor spoke of these things that they were wanting to hear about in his day, sex and money and, and all sorts of things. It was, it was absolutely awful. It was godless. And I just thought, yeah, his church is huge, but hate to tell him, it's not a church. It's just a crowd. And, and I, and I heard a preacher say one time, anybody can draw a crowd. Anybody can draw a crowd. But only God can build a church. And, and so it's, it's not about the number. It's not about the crowds. It's, it's not about making people feel good. It's not about making yourself look good. It's about being faithfully obedient to the Word of God. As a pastor, as a church member, as a servant of God, as a follower of Jesus Christ, we must be faithful. And there's great joy in being faithful. So do not align yourself with someone who does not preach and teach the gospel. Says, "In a culture of evangelism, we don't mistake entertainment for ministry or ministry for entertainment. We declare together the wonderful truths of God. We tell one another of His great salvation, His glory among the nations, and His marvelous works." He says, "I long for a church that understands the dangers of entertainment and sees it for what it is, a lion crouching at the evangelical door, ready to devour us. We need a culture of evangelism that never sacrifices to the idolatry of entertainment, but serves up the rich fare, F-A-R-E, found in the gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ." So, um, I'm trying to split these chapters up about half each, each time we meet. Powerful, powerful words, um, from our, our chapter. And I'm just, I'm just looking. I'm, I'm thinking there's people, there's people behind me on the porch. Oh, there they go. There's people everywhere out here. They're walking all around. Anyways, we are, we're having a great time in Tennessee. I, let me just share my heart with you. As I approach 10 years of being the senior pastor of Alexander Baptist Church, uh, I just wanna tell you how much I love you, how thankful I am that God brought us to Alexander. And God put together a pastor and a people. My family and Alexander family, and we all became one. And if, um, you know, I really struggle, I think, sometimes with wondering what people think. I think we all do. But I'm so thankful for the, the centrality of the cross at Alexander Baptist Church. I'm so thankful for the love of God and the love for people at Alexander Baptist Church. So some things I want to say, I want to say how much I love you. I want to tell you that I'm committed to you. I want to tell you that I'm, I'm committed to the Lord, committed to a gospel. I wanna encourage you to be committed to the Lord as well. I want you to be committed to me. And don't, don't put me on a pedestal. I'm gonna let you down. I'm not Jesus. But be committed to me, and, and let me be committed to you. And let us see God do wonderful things in our midst because of our faithfulness together and our joy in loving one another. So, um, yeah, it's been a great, a great time to be with you guys. Um, it's been awesome. I'm looking forward to, I don't know, supper? Yeah. Dinner? Ever how you, ever what you call it. Um, so, um, yeah, love and miss you guys. It's great. Um, in case you haven't been plugged in or logged in, um, got to see my mom today, so that was pretty cool. Um, I think we're gonna go to the lake tomorrow, float around. Uh, got to go to the woods today. That was pretty cool. So, yeah. Pastor Gene's coming full force on Sunday morning, so you better be ready at 10 o'clock. Praise the Lord for that. Hang on. Noel? You okay? Uh, Noel is getting pretty tired, uh, on the roof, holding the tinfoil and the antenna, so I'm gonna have to cut this short. I don't want her to fall. I don't want her legs to lock up or anything and, and her to pass out or anything, so. Oh, whoop, she's okay. I got the thumbs up. She's okay. There we go. I got the thumbs up from outside. She's okay. All right, well, again, love you, miss you, um, wish you were here. And so, uh, yeah, love you tons. We'll see you, um, actually, I'll be logging in, watching you all on Sunday. You won't get to see me Sunday, but I'll be back, so. Love you tons. Take care. God bless you. All right. See ya. Bye.